Good afternoon, everyone. It's three P M. Monday, October second, twenty twenty-three. And this is a study session agenda and meeting of Central Yavapai Metropolitan Planning Organization. Uh, call order and roll call. Can you have the roll call, please? Desi?
Chair Brown.
Here.
Vice Chair Hughes. Absent. Secretary Good. Absent. Member Armstrong.
Here.
Member Palguda. And Member Knight.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. That, uh, can we go ahead and have a pledge of allegiance? Tom, would you lead us in the pledge?
I'm honored to. The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
All right, we don't have a call for public this time, right? Okay, so executive directors update.
Uh, Mr. Chair, members of the board, just one update reminder that tomorrow we have a ribbon cutting that Simpo is hosting at, uh, three P M. In the town of Prescott Valley at the event spot. I should have the address in front of me, but I don't. I don't know if Allison, Desi, Mayor Palguda, if you know what it is. But the event spot in Prescott Valley, we were there for the Sun Dog Connector Public Meeting, so. Uh, three P M., uh, this is the Highway sixty-nine, uh, preservation project that Representative Wynn was uh, successful in championing the cause. Our guest speakers tomorrow will be Chairman Craig Brown of the Simpo Board, Mayor Palguda, Representative Wynn, and Anthony Brozich, the A dot, uh, District Administrator. So hope to see you there. Any questions? I'm happy to answer. That's all I got.
All right. Any questions for Vinnie in regards to tomorrow's, uh, presentation? Congratulations to down in Prescott Valley. Project. Uh, we'll see you in the, in the afternoon. All right, uh, let's see, let's go on to review and discussion of the scope of work for the twenty fifty Regional Transportation Plan known as the R T P.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and we're, we're gonna skip item four just for a moment. Kevin's en route physically here, so he'll be here shortly. Um, on this particular item, though, this was discussed at the last executive board meeting, and it was requested by the board to give you a little bit of time to come back. So if we can pull, I don't know if we can pull this up on the screen, but it is in your packets. We do have the scope outline in your packet. Um, just again, a brief reminder, uh, we are, staff is currently developing the scope of work for the regional transportation plan, which looks to the next twenty-five years. Um, the current, uh, long-range plan that we're operating from is from the years twenty twenty to the years twenty forty-five. We are required by federal law to have this particular document. We are required to update it every five years. You, as the local governments that make up Simpo, are the author of this plan. Um, this looks at all aspects of transportation for the next twenty-five years, and again, we update it every five years. So I briefly just want to go through the scope outline. Please note what I'm looking for from you and your staff is input. There are some very basics to this, but there are parts of the twenty-five-year plan that we could enhance depending on your guidance and jurisdiction. So I'm just gonna stick to some of the highlighted general categories. Again, we did talk about this at the last meeting. So we have the kickoff and the, the project administration and overall management in task two with all projects. We want to ensure that the public and stakeholders have um, access to it, that they're the ones, uh, contributing to it. Um, I think in light of some of these projects that are making the newspaper, like the Sun Dog Connector, State Route eighty-nine through the Dells, um, it's important to acknowledge that these particular projects rise through those type of planning processes. Both those projects are identified in the twenty-five-year plan, along with a number of other things that we've accomplished, um, that have become priorities. So again, it's critical to acknowledge that your general plans, your comprehensive plans, your development, growth, um, projections, all directly contribute to the twenty-five-year plan. So again, you are the author of it. Uh, number three, um, we're gonna, as always, look at the economic uh, and the social economic aspects of the region. Again, looking at the diverse population we have in the area. Uh, we look closely at how people are accessing mobility, whether it's with their own vehicle, bicycle, pedestrian, or other means. So that is a part of it. Um, task number four is the very technical part, but this is a very important part, the traffic modeling. People try to really wrap their heads around, how do we come up with these particular projects? How are we able to look at how eighty-nine through the Dells is operating today? And if the city of Prescott or no one does anything over the next five to twenty-five years, what does that look like? That's on any given regional road. That's Williamson Valley, Glassford Hill Road, Willow Creek Road. All of these regional roads are identified in that twenty-five-year plan. We look at the condition of the roadway, of the pavement condition. We look at the traffic count. We look at the safety as it operates today and into the future. So it's important to highlight that the technical aspects of that goes into a traffic modeling system that then projects based upon, uh, development in your region, uh, commercial, origin, destination, that type of information. Um, task number five, again, it's multimodal, so we're looking at again, roadways, highways, public transit, bicycle, pedestrian. We're also looking at new technology in the, in the form of, um, E V and, uh, charging stations and other types of mobility. Uh, task number six, again, I've already highlighted this, but we are looking again to the future, and we're taking your information, your permitting numbers, your growth information, what's projected in all of the jurisdictions, and we're inputting that into the, the long-range plan. Uh, task number seven is the environmental section. Um, as you're aware, we have our, uh, E Mac organization that, our committee that we, that works and serves, uh, in recommendations to you and through the TAC. So again, we want to ensure that this is acknowledging all aspects of our environment, most especially how transportation uh, impacts that. We know we talked quite a bit about wildlife corridors, wildlife areas, but there are other aspects of the environmental, um, areas. Uh, kind of going down the home stretch, task number eight is what, what is the investment choice from a region? And we, we do this every couple of years where, again, with limited dollars, where do you want to see those dollars invested in? You know, it, as it is throughout the state, as it is regionally, very often it goes to the area of preservation, which again is a very key and important area. But as you see listed under eight point two, we have other areas like modernization, expansion, and mobility. When you look at a project that's been in the works for a while on State Route sixty-nine, uh, in front of Lowe's there, again, that's more than, than preserving it. That is, you know, expanding that section of roadway. When you look at things like, uh, modernizing, a few years ago, Simpo led the uh, traffic signal, uh, study that was done about upgrading that type of infrastructure. So you do have other aspects of transportation, other, other ways of moving the people around. And then finally, task nine is the final plan, and task ten is grant assistance. You know, this, this last section, I do think, is something we haven't had historically, and I do want to highlight. There are a number of opportunities through the federal government to pay for a number of projects, and it would be helpful for Simpo to, in this document, be able to provide um, the local municipalities, the region with this type of information. So it's important that Simpo identifies areas of need, but the question you have pretty quick is, all right, how do we pay for it? So we really want this R T P to, to show, uh, the areas where it can be improved, but also the areas of implementation, and we believe that that grant assistance can offer that. So again, I gave you an incredibly brief run-through. Uh, the cost will, and you'll have a few, we'll bring this to you back in November, but we're looking at, I think, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to produce this. It'll take about, uh, fifteen months. We will hire a consultant and we'll go through that process. Again, we do this every five years, but I can't emphasize enough that you all are the direct authors of this document. This is not something that Simpo does in a bubble, and I think in light of some of these projects that are making a little more newsworthy, um, notes that that should be highlighted. So, Mr. Chair, with that said, that is the draft scope. We'll bring you the final scope next month, and we'll issue out an R F P with your approval after that, and bring on a consultant after the first of the year.
Would we have a section that would cover, uh, charging stations and things like that?
We, we do currently have a section that talks about technology. You know, staff's approach to that, sir, is looking at the next twenty-five years, that there is an opportunity for, uh, the region to have more discussions. I know the state is currently doing a uh, statewide plan and evaluating the highway system and how that could relate. But we do think as a region, it would be valuable to check in with you all and see what, what type of services in that area you might want to offer. So the answer is yes.
Kell, have you seen anybody coming from the outside industry coming forward, wanting to put in charging stations in your town?
There's been a little bit of discussion about it, but it's been offline, and they haven't really officially made any attempt or made anything public, but there has been a little bit of discussion about that.
Have you heard anything about the city of Prescott at all?
No.
Frank, how about you? Anything from, uh, Chino Valley? Charging stations? No, Tom?
We, we've had some talks with A P S about possibly putting some at the town hall along with overhead, uh, parking cover with the solar panels, but that's as far as it's gone so far.
Okay, with solar panels? Okay. So the county hasn't been approached that I'm aware of, but that doesn't mean they haven't talked to an individual supervisor. So, but it might be something we might want to look at. Although I don't think they're the greatest thing to happen to a rural environment, but still you have people that have them and just drive around town, so. Let's see.
And if I can, Mr. Chair, that, that's exactly, we'd want to identify in the R T P, what is your direction for the region? What role? You know, does private industry play in that versus local government or anything in between? So we would want to cast that as part of it, and Mr. Chair Frank has a comment. Turn your mic on, Frank.
No.
Should be a green light when it goes on.
Uh, Spock, I was thinking more along the side, eighty-nine is a main arterial, you know, road going through, going through this area, and it's within the two-hundred-mile distance back, you know, to Phoenix and things like that. Possibly a charging station might be placed in Prescott Valley since it's the first big town coming in.
Yes, sir. Uh, all I've heard is A dot trying to get them every fifty miles or something.
Yeah. That's gonna be hard to do, too, so. By the way, since you brought up A dot, uh, Tony, uh, you did make notice that we had another fatality on eighty-nine North out of Chino Valley last week. Yeah, it's a, uh, big freight hauler took out a small little car, and the person in it, so. That's number six. As we start at the eighty-nine North project discussion.
Mr. Chair, we're, we're gonna take comments from you and the TAC for the next two weeks, but we want to kind of wrap up any comments you have. So again, we're not looking for any final comments today, sir, but um, as the next couple of weeks go on, if there is something that you would like to see in this document that would help you, again, understand we're covering the basics. What is the traffic volume count? What are safety issues? What are, uh, pavement conditions? What is projected growth? Things like that. We're gonna cover those, but if there are additional things or nuances, please, uh, let me know, and I'll be happy to bring that in as part of the scope.
Any other comments? Don't see any. Good. Okay, going back to item number four. A review and discussion of the simple priority projects to be presented at the twenty-twenty-three Rural Transportation Summit for consideration for state legislative funding. Vinnie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So this is, this is really the heart of the study session today, and I appreciate the chart, the chair calling for this meeting. I, I know you're not gonna see a whole lot new today, but in light of us participating in the Rural Transportation Summit in two weeks in Yuma, uh, the chair, along with myself, felt it was incredibly valuable that we all come together. Uh, we appreciate Kevin Adams, the, uh, liaison for the Rural Transportation Advocacy Council, R T A C, uh, being with us, and I'll invite him up in just a moment, but I wanted to give some Simpo specifics leading into, to Kevin's guidance, guidance and direction for the summit itself. Um, please know the last couple of years that we've been working with Kevin and the R T A C organization to be incredibly successful in approaching the state legislature for one-time transportation dollars. Um, we'll just, uh, use this past year as an example that, uh, we were able to uh, successfully obtain, uh, nine-point-nine million dollars for Glassford Hill Road as a regionally significant route. I believe that project is gonna be underway from a design standpoint very soon. So congratulations again to Mayor Palguda, the town of Prescott Valley and staff. And we, we do need to really highlight, uh, Senator Bennett, Representative Wynn, and Representative Bliss and their championing of these particular projects. These would not have happened without their, uh, leadership, their championing of those causes. So with that said, uh, we're going into this next legislative year, and, uh, Kevin will get into some more details about this in a minute, but we are looking at a four-hundred-million-dollar, uh, one-time ask for greater Arizona. Of that four-hundred-million dollars to greater or rural Arizona, again, that's outside Phoenix and Tucson. Um, Simpo, based upon population in rural Arizona, would get about thirty-three-point-six million dollars. Um, in your packet, you have a couple of things that we've prepared for you. Allison, if you'd go on to the infographic on the next page, um, right there, that's perfect. So let's go through this as a breakdown. So um, TAC and staff have made recommendations to you. You've approved this final list. Uh, project number one is a continuation from last year. Uh, we know that we approached, um, the state legislatures, our, our, um, legislative district in particular with project number one. That was unsuccessful, but we want to, again, make this as our number-one request this year, and it's State Route eighty-nine widening between three to five north. This is about two miles, and it would take that section of highway from two lanes to four lanes or, um, uh, four total lanes. So right now, it's currently one lane in both directions, and we want to go two lanes in both directions. The request of the state would be around thirteen million dollars. Um, I need to make a note on that ten percent, uh, local contribution. Please remember that this is not, um, this ten percent local contribution is not across the board for all of Arizona, but Simpo has, um, enacted this ten percent because of our specific legislators. They've asked for skin in the game in these particular projects. Representative Wynn in particular, and the last couple of years, it was my recommendation that we pick a number that seemed palatable to everyone involved. The state seemed to be agreeable to the ten percent. So with that in mind, um, the total project cost is fourteen-point-three million to do this. Again, this is a state facility. Um, the local contribution would be about one-point-three-three million dollars. Again, we look to the town of Chino Valley to carry that burden. Um, last year, the discussions included the county and tentative discussions. Again, there's, there's no agreement, if you will, today, but in the months to come, we know that Yavapai County, the town of Chino Valley, and Simpo will have discussions and see how that, uh, burden of one-point-three million could be shared. Um, if you would remember, one of the earliest parts of this particular project also included a roundabout at Road Five North and eighty-nine. That's no longer part of the project at your direction. Um, we did remove that roundabout, and those dollars were reallocated to project number two. Uh, project number two, if you'd scroll down, thank you, is State Route eighty-nine and eighty-nine A. It's an eastbound on-ramp. Um, Simpo's been, um, doing a lot of work at this particular intersection. This is adjacent to the golf course in the airport. And this additional, um, on-ramp is currently needed. If you're familiar with that area going eastbound, there are two lanes. If you stay on the furthest right lane, you'll stay on the frontage road. The left lane will take you onto eighty-nine A. With the growing capacity, it has been identified that an additional lane needs to be constructed onto eighty-nine A, essentially giving you three lanes, one for the frontage, two for the highway. Um, I probably won't go into the history of this in great depth because I have before, but I could summarize it by, two years ago, we had the money for it. A year ago, we had, we lost half the money for it, and today we sit at a place where we've lost all the money for it. There's a lot of story to be told there, except that the legislature has been, uh, great at championing this project, but then when it came time to move dollars around, this project was sacrificed this past year. I will say that the, the project has been designed, so that's a plus, but it does currently sit with zero dollars for construction. So in order to construct that, it's around five million dollars to add that additional capacity. So that is project number two. Again, please remember from project number one, the roundabout was removed from Five North. That money got transferred into this project. And then in closing, project number three, if you'd scroll down. Please. Project number three totals around fifteen million dollars. The, uh, recommendation that you approved is preservation for the region. So trying to identify projects that would work best in the Simpo region, it seemed as though, uh, breaking the money apart based upon population within the Simpo region this year would give everyone some dollars to work with. You can see the overall breakdown. I won't list it all, but it's fifteen-point-two million, starting at the top, where the town of Prescott Valley would receive four-point-nine, Prescott four-point-eight, and so forth down the list. Allison, if you'd scroll to the next page, um, I have been working with your staff to break down those dollar amounts, and this will help you today to see tentatively where those dollars would go. So again, the town of Chino Valley would receive one-point-three million dollars. Um, staff has inserted some regionally significant roads such as Reed Road and Perkinsville Road. Dewey Humboldt would receive four-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand. That would go towards Main Street and Henderson. The city of Prescott would receive about four-point-eight-six million. That would go towards preservation of Willow Creek Road and Gurley Street. Town of Prescott Valley would receive four-point-nine million. That would go towards Robert Road, Florentine and Paveway, and closing it out, Yavapai County would receive around three-point-five million dollars, and that would go towards Senator Highway. So please note that these projects have risen um, through your staff, through your public works directors and others con- contributing to it. And again, the, the approach to the state legislature is these are local, regionally significant routes, and this is, um, a request of the overall package of thirty-three-point-six million. So fifteen-point-two million would go towards preservation across the region. Uh, with that said, at the Rural Transportation Summit in two weeks, we will, we will, we will illustrate all of these projects as they're gonna be put in a book, and the legislature will have all four-hundred-million dollars worth of projects. But I will tell you in particular, uh, we will highlight one project in a presentation. So Supervisor Brown is the chair of Simpo, will present project number one. Um, we're gonna have about a forty-five-minute presentation where ten regions are each gonna give, be given about two to three minutes to present one of their projects. So Highway eighty-nine will be that number-one project that Chairman Brown presents on behalf of the Simpo region to the greater audience. I think in attendance, right now, we have around two-hundred-and-thirty people attending. I believe it's slightly under twenty legislators, mixture of senators and, uh, representatives. The primary audience are those, uh, state, uh, legislators along with the other local elected officials. So it really is a, a program that's uh, being very well done to put on the needs of greater Arizona, the specific needs, and I think with that said, I think, Mr. Chair, that gives at least Simpo's very specifics, but if I can invite Kevin up, and he can kind of fill in any gaps I missed. I just wanted to provide the specifics for our region, Kevin?
Absolutely, and, uh, one thing I wanna, everybody that's going, Kell, are you going?
I am.
Um,
Yes.
Myself. Anybody else on the board?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mayor Good is registered. Mayor Hughes is registered. And then I think most of your TAC members, I believe, are registered, sir.
I think it's really important that our entire board be versed on everything that we're asking for, the three specific items, so that if they're cornered, talked to, and passing, having a drink, whatever it may be, is that everybody be on their best game. I mean, we almost had it twice, two years running. This is gonna be to make us or break us as an organization, in my opinion, so. Kevin, how are you?
Good, thank you, sir.
What's your thoughts?
Afternoon, everyone. Uh, just give you a little bit more, um, background, but I think we, we're going on in the right direction, or you're going in the right direction with your projects. As far as they're concerned, I think that, uh, unfortunately, this year, we're not, uh, guaranteed the, the level of revenue to work with um, at the state level that we have the, the previous couple of years where the, uh, the federal and state reactions and the anticipation of, of COVID uh, generated some, uh, extremely high cash balances that the state had to work with, uh, multi-billions, uh, for a couple of years. And so obviously, uh, there was a lot more, um, opportunity uh, with that sort of, uh, level of funding, uh, to work with. And I thought that we did a, a tremendous job statewide in demonstrating the level of need and the demand that was out there for infrastructure, uh, which is, uh, why we put forward the priority project legislation the last couple of years. And it's a very fluid process. I think that, uh, we didn't get all of the specific projects that were in our bill. It is somewhat complicated. It's, it's a money bill, and like with, uh, other money bills, it's really gonna come down to the budget negotiations as far as what's included and what isn't. But underlying that, I think the fact that we pushed this legislation, it gave us a vehicle to, um, make very visible, uh, the unmet needs that are out there and the impact that they're having on communities across the state. And as a result, uh, two years, there was an additional one billion that was directed to transportation infrastructure, and that was followed up last year with another six-hundred-and-fifty million. So I do think that it was a very worthwhile exercise, and the net result was we did see higher levels of investment on our highways and roads. So, uh, for this year, it's gonna be a lot more unpredictable as far as the level of revenue that they have to work with. Um, I, I'm fairly confident, unfortunately, that will not be the levels from the previous couple of years. Uh, the balances that had been built up, uh, such as with, uh, the COVID relief funding, those have been exhausted. So as far as this year is concerned, we'll be dealing strictly with, uh, revenue collections, um, over the upcoming months as well as any, uh, required adjustments in state expenditures. And it's been somewhat of a roller coaster, uh, the beginning of this fiscal year, where we had one extremely high month in collections, and we've had a couple of others where, where we're still seeing growth, but not nearly to the levels that we saw before. Uh, we're also, um, we've implemented, uh, income tax cuts that were enacted last year, and that's already taking a bite out of withholdings, and, and so we are seeing some lower numbers on the income tax front. So with that said, we don't know what level of funding we'll have to work with this year, but I think we want to continue to be proactive, and if there is revenue available, make the case for directing as much of it as we can uh, to the infrastructure. And I think, uh, that, that is the reason that we are, uh, pursuing, uh, the bill. Um, and then, and then, uh, to follow up on that, I think that another exercise that we did for the first time last year was at the Rural Transportation Summit, having the R T A C board showcasing a project from the region that's in the bill. Uh, I think unfortunately, we're, we, we were up to, I think, twenty at one time, but it's, it's kind of like herding cats, and we get, you know, they, they'll, you know, we get cancellations on the R S V Ps, and I think right now- You know, they they'll, you know, we get cancellations on the RSVPs and I think right now. We have um, fourteen legislators uh, who will be in attendance. And there's also a very strong possibility that the governor. Will be there as well, and where we have it placed in the agenda. Is we will have the RTAC Board make their presentation. And that will be immediately followed by a panel. Of legislative leaders, uh, where we'll have roughly an hour long. Conversation with uh, once those leaders have finished with uh, their remarks. Um, we will give the opportunity for other legislators in attendance to uh, also. Make comments and as time permits, we'll have as much of a. Running dialogue between them and the RTAC Board and and other participants. Uh, but this will immediately follow the presentation from the RTAC Board, so. Um, I I I thought it was a very well done last year. Um, we'll have either videos or or pictures. Uh, running on the screen behind each RTAC Board member as they showcase their projects, so. Um, we'll have some good visuals to to really back. Uh, the uh, the assertions of the of the board members and in making the case for their project. So um, I I think that's uh, that's what I've got as far as further background, if anybody has any questions.
I've got one, is the sitting governor. Do she or any of the other folks that she's appointed? They got a plan or somewhere that somebody doesn't know about? Explains how they're gonna try and make up for all that. The uh, money we don't have, you know, for taking care of the needs of this whole state.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, the uh, the governor has acknowledged the level. Of underfunding, um, I can't say that there's a um, specific plan. That she's brought forward, uh, the state agencies have just provided to her. Their budget requests for the upcoming year, so I think at at the uh, on the ninth floor, I think they're going through that. Exercise of trying to um, pair available revenues um, with. The uh, expenditures, their their priorities. Uh, but as far as uh, increasing transportation revenues, um. I I, there's not a plan, uh, quite frankly, from anyone, whether it be the governor. Or lawmakers to increase the revenue streams that feed into HIRF. Now, with that said, I I I think it's also important to to point out. Um, I think everybody's pro- probably here is probably familiar that the uh. The transportation sales tax in Maricopa County. Is um, set to expire at the end of twenty twenty-five and at the end of this session. Uh, they did enact um, a law that provided the county with the authority to take to their voters an extension of that. Uh, what you may not be familiar with is uh, we're, we'll be going through the same exercise in Pima County. And in addition to that, there's a Penal County road tax which is set to expire. So in uh, our state's three largest counties, there's going to be three very. Significant transportation tax extension votes next year, so. Uh, I I can't imagine that we would see um, next year, any additional. Transportation measure taken to the voters when when roughly eighty-five percent of the state's population. Will already be considering a measure.
You all, any questions?
Mr. Chair, if I could also, I would like to acknowledge the tack members that are also present, your staff. It's important that they made time also, if you had any questions for them, so again. Frank Marbury is on the tack and represents the town of Chino Valley, Gwen Roach from the city of Prescott. Um, uh, Dan Cherry is out of town, but Roger McCormick's here for the county. And appreciate our A dot partners with Anthony and and Andy being here. So again, they worked with you to identify these projects, so to the chair's point, um. This project number three, we did just list the name of the road, I have more specifics to each of these projects. I guess my strategy at this point, in light of Kevin's update historically and even today is. You know, this is a a pretty big ask when you work down the list, so. For now, I'm kind of keeping it to the headlines, but you know, staff can develop more information as needed. But I'm, I I feel like this is a bit of a long shot when you get down to project number three. So again, no, we've kept it very simple. Your staff is working with Simpo staff. And if you need us to develop that image more, we can, but uh, they are here also for any questions you may have or comments.
Mr. Chair, and if I could respond to that, just something that springs out to me is uh, with your your third priority. Uh, you know, if we're. Five months from now or six months from now in a position where the revenue outlook. Isn't really strong, uh, then you know, a a twenty million project may not be viable. Whereas a six hundred thousand uh, pavement press project. Might be in the price range as far as the funding that is available, so we'll we'll have to see. How this all plays out, but uh, I I I think it's, I I like that you've got a. Kind of a wide spectrum or or variety of of projects that you're putting forward.
Thanks for saying that, Mr. Chair, to that point, I, and I hope we continue to operate this way, but. There have been those moments when I've received a call, literally where Representative Wynn's going to the floor and. Asking details about projects and it seems as though there is movement. To Kevin's point, Mr. Chair, members of the board where. We're not necessarily first in line for the full amount, but he's asking questions. What would it look like if we received a significant less? Could we still operate? To some degree towards implementation. And those discussions do happen, and again, I appreciate those opportunities where we have that type of flexibility.
Okay. Anybody else out there in any of the counties got any other ideas? As far as how we're gonna come up with these revenues out of the state to pay for these different items we're asking for. Even though I don't see the three or four hundred million dollars being that much in this state, but. I don't know where it's gonna come from and they obviously only have, what, about seven million left until right now, so. Just grasping for straws.
Being proactive, grasping for whatever we can.
That's right. All right, any other questions, Tom?
Mr. Chair, the uh, the legislators have already approached me asking if this recent. Fatality on eighty-nine is within the scope of three to five. And I explained to him, no, it's slightly north of there, but yes, it definitely needs to be included that this. It's a dangerous road, it needs to be taken care of.
Well, what's kind of interesting is where this accident was is right in the same area where the uh. We already have safety money identified that we're trying to go, A dot's trying to go forward to. You know, include up there at Little Ranch and up in that area, so. Just a tragedy, we got, got people getting killed constantly if they're in uh, had no way to fix the road. So, and it's. Great dump truck, I mean. Bull collar against a little car, I know who's gonna win, so. It's uh, unfortunate, it's hard to face the people up there in the fallen area community organization. Tell them, we're working hard for it, we're working, we've been saying that for what, ten years now, so. Just a difficult situation. I know A dot would like to do it if they had the money, but they don't have the ready money and they've gotta wait until the Fed money comes in, so. Am I right, Tom? Anyway, anything else? Right, thank you.
You also have board member Knight, I don't know that he has any comment.
Oh yeah, Gary, how are you? I forgot, you're such a short timer and so quiet.
Yeah, I'm uh, just listening to everything that's going on. I'm just wondering if. There's any, we've still got quite a bit of uh, smart funds left for the smaller communities. I think. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Dewey might fit into that. Um, but anyway, uh, if there's any uh. Federal grants of any kind that could be applied for and. Then apply for the smart funds for the matching funds. Uh, don't forget about that, cause it's, it's there. And uh, next week. Uh, Kevin and I are gonna, we're gonna speak with the Senator Bennett about a. A plan that I have for. Money for HIRF. Uh, a revenue stream that. May or may not work, but it uh. Is worth talking about and we're gonna discuss it with uh, Senator Bennett. That's, that's all I've got.
No, I appreciate, you know, the fact that our three legislators at least talked about, you know, they're supporting different things. I will hold them accountable. Anything else, anybody? Anything for the public? How about E O C? Environmental Committee, you guys had a meeting here just recently, did you not? I know this is not on the agenda, so I'm over going out of my bounds, but. It's always nice to see you guys here. Anyway, with that. We'll call the meeting. Into adjournment, thank you, sir.